Good morning baddies and welcome back to the vlogs. This week's video is going to be an unedited day in my life. Wanna know why? Because I just found out my editor can't edit this week. And I'm not very good at editing and I've seen people do these before and I love seeing how they actually like live their lives, so I'm gonna take you on a day. Today's Thursday and um I don't have any work meetings today, which is not necessarily rare, I don't usually on Mondays and Fridays, but on Thursdays usually I have one or two. But today I have to drive on a really big project. I'm building um a deck basically that I've been working on. It's one of my stretch projects and stretches like to help you, you know, go to, it's like a next level type of thing and I really wanted to live on it. And since I was out of office the last two weeks, I feel like I hadn't had time to work on it and I'm really excited about it, so I'm going to work on that today, so I'll take you through my like at-home deep work sessions. But right now, I woke up a little late today, I woke up at six. I tried one of those, so Sandland is a brand I've worked with before, they have these like sleep supplements. They're really good, um but they are. I don't like how my hair is looking today. They have these sleep supplements, let's find a hair tie. There you go, why is my watch in here? What the fuck? What did I do to do this? Oh my god, is it charged? No, of course it isn't. Whatever, anyway. They have these sleep supplements and I've taken them, but they um are, they just came out with a patch and so I tried it last night and girl, it was just so groggy, so. Yeah, that's the vibe, I didn't want to be that groggy, but I guess the sleep patch does that to you. Um so, here's, here's my outfit of the day, um I'm wearing this Amazon tank top, which I love. I can't find a link for it and I'm very sorry. This linen shirt, you guys know I live in this. And my old athletic leggings, my two seventies. Um even though I woke up at like seven today, um I usually would go at five thirty or six. Still gonna go on my long walk to Starbucks because I need to be caffeinated. And um yesterday I didn't get like my ten K steps in, which is totally fine. Sometimes people, one person was saying to me, she's like, you shouldn't be so obsessed with your step count. And I'm like, I'm not obsessed with my step count, I just, well, I am a little obsessed with my step count. But I don't, I think it's just because that's how I feel my best, but like when I don't get ten K, I just go on to the next day, like I'm not crazy. But um I noticed that yesterday, I just wanted to get that out, but I still have been working out. Um I'm trying to work out more consistently, as in like four to five times a week instead of two to three. So I worked out yesterday, so I'm really not impressed. I, we're going to walk to Starbucks and we're gonna come back and we're going to journal and get ready to work. Um for unedited vlogs, can you put music on the back? I wonder. They answered you. He made a dance? Wow. So. Wow. Alright, we're back from the walk. Jeff just is up and took out the trash. I was listening to First Renaissance because there's nothing else out right now, obviously. It's the only piece of music we should be consuming as um a member of the Beehive. But I got home and now, on days where I'm running behind and don't have time to journal, I do a quick sit-down with my journal and I do kidding. Apparently our neighbor's dog is not happy with Jeff taking the trash out. Um I do a quick journal where I just do gratitude affirmations goals. Because we cannot, like today, I would really like to sit and think about all my feelings and stuff, but I know my brain works the best in the morning. So from nine, it's eight twenty right now, from nine to eleven, I wanna do a deep work session, so I'm just gonna do that now. And I'm doing an unedited day of my life. In the vlog. Um, oh my goodness. The ice roll. Legendary today, I'm so puffy because we had Hell and Raze for dinner, we had, it's like a chicken spot, it's like the best. We've had it three times in three weeks, so. That should tell you something, but it's obviously got a lot of salt, so I'm gigantic this morning. I love an ice roller! Okay, now it's, now I'm sitting at my dining table and I'm editing, or not editing, I am releasing today's podcast episode, I already released it this morning, but I need to um edit the description and add some links, so I'm doing that before nine AM. Um I find, usually I try to have my assistant do this, but I meant to like do it and send that to her last night, okay? I just wanna come up with a little bit of a better title for it, so we'll see, the. So I just did that, posted that stuff. It doesn't seem like I have time to do a bunch of like TikTok at Instagram this morning, it is eight forty-two. I might be able to like post some stories and send TikToks this morning, so I might do that, I have twenty minutes before I wanna get started. Um, yeah, let me do that, but while I do that, I'm gonna be listening to the Colin and Samir show. Um if you're a creator or if you're interested in the creator economy or you work at like somewhere like where you work with creators, um Colin and Samir, they're amazing, I've met them, we hung out for a while during a YouTube, during a conference, they're iconic, I love their stuff and a tip for going into deep work, so deep work is something that was like popularized by the author Cal Newport. Cal Newport wrote the book Deep Work, I've read that book and I've read a lot of other books about like productivity and working, one of them being um Working Hard Hardly Working by Grace Beverley. And essentially, in that book, Cal Newport talks about how to get into deep work and for me, um and it starts with like warming up your brain, then doing like one, you can really only focus for like ninety minutes to two hours and then like doing a cooldown afterwards. And so for me, warming up means like listening to a podcast that is in the industry, um like about creators and that really helps me because I'm about to be working on a deck that's about creators, so listening to that is like part of my warm-up process for getting into that deep work state. And then you eliminate all distractions and you get to work on what you have to work on, so I'm gonna post some stories and stuff for the show and then I'm gonna get into my actual work, so.
Thomas in twenty twenty and really experience him um as an artist and recognize like he's the type of guy who can't help but go make these YouTube videos. And I really am so enamored and infatuated by these types of artists and I feel like he's having this like artistic awakening right now, between the Honey Hunters video and the Syria video they just released, if you guys haven't watched those, go to Yes Theory and check out their last two videos, I mean these are movies. Like the quality of this stuff is, i- if you saw it on Netflix, it would be stuff that people talk about. Like people would be like, have you seen this, have you seen this, like it is at that quality level. And the storytelling might be even better because it's just a guy going and doing it. I, I think another commonality then across all of these creators we've spoken to is either they are great editors slash storytellers or they have a great relationship with their.
Okay, so I just, we got our little morning together, um I had a phone call and then I ended up like cleaning my, like vacuuming my couch because it was not giving and I needed to be clean out there. Uh I'm working in the office today. My wifi is not iconic, it's not giving, it's not giving me everything it needs to give. So in the office, I can't really take video calls as easily, so I am working in, so when I need to take video call, they go out there and then this year. Oh my god, this man is so annoying. Sorry, I just opened my email, tell me what, there's. I'm working on this deck and my designer edited it and like gave me a fresh designer refresh and I'm like amazing, fabulous, this is great. But one of the colors isn't giving like in the section that it's in, so I asked him to switch that color with another color and he's like, I'm not understanding the ask, would it be, would it be possible to have a phone call? I'll do it myself then, like. I can't, anyway, so that's all. Anyway, um now I'm going through my emails, so I usually, I open my email in the morning. I'm just gonna do a quick sweep of it and then by nine thirty, I wanna start on my deep work so that by eleven thirty, this deck is looking fabulous, stunning, beautiful, iconic and then we're giving. Sounds good, sounds fabulous, so um the important part about deep work is not having any distractions. So I'll probably like film myself at the beginning of doing it, but I'm not gonna like film myself doing it the whole time. I'm gonna put my phone away, I'm gonna put my watch on silent and then it's important to think about your, how you work best, so some people work best with music, some people work best with out music, whatever, I personally listen to albums that I know every word to because it's just background noise at that point, so I might listen to Renaissance. Um, my god, I might listen to Renaissance um when I'm doing this work, but I like to listen to stuff that like, like a tame Impala or something, like things that I know, I've listened to so many times that I don't even like listen to it for real because, oh my god, the wifi has got to be fixed because it's not working correctly over here. But yeah, this is my first time doing deep work in a while without um taking Adderall because I stopped taking an Adderall, taking Adderall like about a week or so ago because the side effects were not giving, so I haven't done this in a long time, so I'm really hoping that it actually works and I don't get distracted, I'm trying to like do everything that I possibly can to make it work, so that is up, um. Oh my god, this email is so annoying, chat soon. My emails put me in a bad mood, but we're coming back. I'm gonna light my candle, this candle I just use for like, this is like the scent that I assign my brain for studying, basically studying, oh wow, studying. Um for working, so it's the Capri Blue Volcano scent and um I've just like needed a habit to always put that on when I needed to work, so scents like um are really good for like training your mind to be like in the, I don't know, mood to do things, so I also always wear this scent to the office when I need to work hard, I'm gonna spray it on me and just it takes me back to getting shit done. And now I'm going to turn everything off and lock in. Oh my god, y'all, so it's a few hours later and I finished for the most part my deck, I did everything that I feel like I can do today, um the other part that needs to be done is less of a deep work thing, it's more of something that you know I can do on my own, so I'm going to, so what I did was, once I did that, I sent it to some of my friends to see if they could review it for me. Um, so that when I make any more progress, it's not like stupid, you know, what I mean? So yeah, so then I'm probably gonna take off early and then come back and work later, perks of not having any meetings today. Um to go get lunch with Delara, AKA Legal Batty on TikTok, my bestie. Um and then I'll come back, we will work a little bit more and we will then pack to go home to St. Louis tomorrow, so hate to see that, but like I love going home, but I went home for sad reason this time, so I um but did all that, what was I gonna say? I had a whole thought and I lost it. But now it's time to get ready for lunch. Um it's a late lunch, very late lunch, but I, my hair looks horrible, I didn't wrap it last night because I'm I don't know, sadist, masochist, whichever one it is, um so I'm gonna try and fix it and then Delara said she's just wearing athletic wear. So I will probably keep on what I have, which I already showed you this morning, or I will switch to like a basic um easy dress, or I'll switch to something and put this over it because it'll look better. We'll see, my hair is my main concern at the moment because it's not giving me anything, so we might have to resort to a Ego Styler bun perhaps, um but yeah, so goodbye to the laptop, gonna answer some pings and then we'll get ready. I cannot believe I look like this. Yeah, the hairs, it's a futile attempt, honestly, I'm gonna try and straighten it down, but sorry if it's loud, we're in the bathroom and I have a fan on because Jeff is watching Mr. Beast's one hundred million video. If you guys don't know who Mr. Beast is and you're probably not a young white man, but he's the biggest YouTuber like out, he's like kind of the face of YouTube, so I work with him a lo- a lot, I don't personally, but I accompanied like my friends and my team do. And he just hit one hundred million subscribers on YouTube, which is a crazy amount objectively, like just an absurd amount of people, but what's even crazier is that he has started in twenty seventeen. Twenty seventeen was only five years ago and so to me, that's just like, it's like a crazy feat, he might be like the fastest um person to a hundred million that we've seen, especially at a time when like content creation is so everyone's like, it's so accurate, it's so accurate, like girl, not that, Mr. Beast can do what he did and he started in twenty seventeen? Then you can get started as a creator now because in twenty seventeen, people were like the age of YouTube, like YouTube is dead. It's like, obviously you're watching this on YouTube, so no it isn't, but that's, it's always cool to see creators succeed like that. Um so yeah, I, I think that looks better, right? Yeah, so I switched to biker shorts for this excursion and um yeah, um how old, I guess we'd say, since we're sitting in here, how did Delara and I become friends? So Delara is AKA Legal Batty on TikTok, um she's like probably the prettiest person I've ever met and also the person, she has the best aura, she's the nicest person ever, she's the baddest bitch, like she personifies a bad bitch, like period. And so she's a lawyer, um and she lives here in LA and last year during Fashion Week, our friend Jewels, it's me Jewels on TikTok, hosted a little TikTok like dinner um during Fashion Week and I went to it and um I met Delara there and we just like hit it off and um we saw each other at Coachella, we saw each other at VidCon and we went out to get her and stuff. Whenever I'm in LA, we hang out and so I'm so happy to have like a friend in LA. Um she's so cool and I love her, so go check her out, but anyway, this is, I like her content a lot too, it's very inspirational um and also just like interesting, she breaks down like a lot of legal cases for us sometimes, which is cool. But that actually straightened a lot better than I thought it would, so, yeah. Now, my hair, like I don't really straighten my hair too often, I mostly just do um every like, I used to just, so I used to straighten my hair, do you wanna talk about my natural hair during the show? So I used to straighten my hair every week in um middle school to high school. Um it's so funny, so you guys know I went to boarding school, or if you don't know, I went to boarding school and there um my best friend Erin, shout out to Erin, he's from Korea and he would, he got like very fascinated with my hair and started straightening my hair for me when I was like a junior and he would just do it for me every week and and so, or my aunt would do it obviously and it was just so funny, it was such a good time, lol, that we used to do that. But he started just like straightening my hair for me, I did it every week, so I had like major heat damage um by the end of high school and then I stopped straightening my hair kind of like all together, like I would probably only do it once or twice a year in college. Um I never took braids or anything, I like literally just wore my natural hair and then um recently, I've just gotten really tired of my natural hair, so um I like just went to Drybar this weekend when I wasn't feeling it and I showed that in the last vlog and I've been going every so often, the reason I got back into it was because of Drybar, because I went to get braids, I got braids in um April, May and I loved them and I got them again and she fucked my hair up, so I went to Drybar because I had a photo shoot the next day and now I'm addicted because having straight hair, it's just so much easier to take care of and like I think obviously it's a lot of heat damage and that's annoying, but at the same time, I'm like I am just so, wanted something different, I've just been really tired of how my hair has been looking, um so it's really just because I want something different and like an interim thing when I don't have braids, so I'm getting braids a week from tomorrow though, like on Friday I'm getting braids, so we'll have a protective style for the next month after that, thank god, so. Yeah, just getting the hair done and then I'm gonna put on a little bit of foundation and we will head on out. We're headed out, by we, I mean me. It's my outfit, I put a headband on because I don't trust humidity, period, but this is the look. I gotta get my bags. Is anything lighting? It's gorgeous. I'm doing um an unedited day in my life. Unedited day in your life? Yeah, so it's just me. So unfortunately, it's so embarrassed, we're in a Mustang. We're in a Mustang on Beverly Hills.
I promise I did not pick this, this was not my.
Not the choice. Not the choice. I had lunch with Delara and our, oh, it was the best meal. The kale salad was exquisite and they have, so it's very odd the food they have because they have like sushi but then they had like chicken sandwiches and kale salad and I was skeptical, I was very skeptical because Delara's been like going off about this place. Tell me whether sushi was like some of the like be- like best I've ever had and the kale salad was also best I've ever had and she said that the chicken sandwich they have is so fucking good and that's what we have to come back for. But they like won't let you do takeout, so we have to go ourselves soon. Whenever we come back in October, sounds good, anyway, it was so good, so we're gonna go back, it was amazing, but we picked up a rental car because we have to run, I'm doing something really fun and cool for you guys and it requires that we get a car tomorrow, so before we go to the airport, so we're in a Mustang and it's extremely humiliating to each, where are we, Rodeo or something? Not even Rodeo, we're just in Beverly Hills in a Mustang. My father would love this. He loves a Mustang. Jeff just told me I'm not unique. Bye! You look crazy! Hello friends, we are going to go to dinner, last minute randomly, so I'm quickly changing into something a little, you can't even say it, so I'm wearing like athleisure right now, but I came home and washed ch- chocks for like an hour, now we're going to dinner. Okay. What should we wear? I just didn't wanna wear like athleisure, it's not like a super nice place, so I don't know, I'm gonna have my hair back, so perhaps I'll just wear one, some like shorts with this top. Yeah, seems great. And some sneakers, some his girlfriend done them. And some yeah, like sneakers, easy peasy. Yeah, I think so. So I thought we were going to get, to go eat there, but no, we were just going to pick it up, I don't know why I thought because he said we're gonna go and I thought that meant we were gonna go eat there and not go pick it up, so. I still look cute though! Alexa, play that Girl by Beyonce.
I'm not able by Beyonce from Apple Music.
My agent of order is here. I'm turn- turning it on. Alexa, pause. First up in the H and M Home Hall is this blob of fake metal. Jeff is giving a thumbs up to us. Alright. Oh, it's, I ordered a jewelry stand. It's just a black jewelry stand. Did you order it? You're still looking at the menu? I thought you wanted lasagna. Great. Love it. I ordered a jewelry stand and you just do it like that, I guess. I wanna put this in my closet. Cute. And then I ordered like some pillows. Fusion.
Do you want any appetizers?
Do they have like a cheese? The, uh.
Is this veranda?
The veranda didn't seem enticing. It's a box within a box. I hate this shit. Yeah, that seems like a pillow. Boring.
Yeah, it's harder to pick up. Please order. So, this carton are bowling heads.
Yeah, oh, bowling heads.
Lasagna.
Oh. What the fuck, man? Usually I cut these parts out of me actually opening boxes, so I'm sorry to my dear friends about this box at, this in my current vicinity. Now, what the hell is this? I ordered a tray. Why is this tray half the size of my face? I ordered a tray. I thought this was much bigger than this. Look at this. What am I gonna do with that? What am I gonna do with that? Okay. Okay. Now, let's hope this is actually something. How long is it gonna take?
Fifteen to twenty minutes?
Okay, we should go on a walk.
We can just go walk and pick it up?
No, I know, but it's, it's very close. So, when we walk, it's only gonna take like four minutes, is what I mean. So, we should go on a walk in that general direction. Ooh. Now, this is much bigger than I expected it to be, this vase. Look at that. She's fat. Love it. You don't like this vase? Hello?
Are you talking to the audience?
I'm talking to you. How am I gonna do like that? Oh, I have to put it in the fridge. Alright, that's it for now, I guess. Okay, before I head out, I'm just doing a quick sweep of my email to be sure nothing crazy is happening. And then I can prep my day because I'm gonna be like on tomorrow, but it doesn't look like anything wild is happening, so that's good. And then I just make a quick to-do list for the next day on my phone. Tomorrow, we will have to get up early to leave, so that's pretty much the main thing. And then while we're at the airport, I have a bunch of content stuff I'm gonna do. We have to take the most annoying flight. We have to fly from here to Atlanta and then Atlanta to St. Louis. So, we're gonna be traveling for like eight hours. And we're gonna get there early because we have an early meeting in the morning. So, we're gonna be at the airport for a hot minute. But it don't matter because we have lounge access. So, we're gonna be in the Delta Lounge and Centurion Lounge and we will provide reviews, maybe, on Instagram. So, that'll be good. Follow me there. Anyhow, once we get dinner, see you later. Alright, friends, we're home. We got Italian, so I'm making myself an Aperol Spritz. I'm gonna show you my recipe. First of all, I guess I'll do ice first in a large glass. These are from CB2. Love CB2. In fact, a little too much. But speaking of CB2, I was supposed to have the bookshelves that I ordered for the entryway delivered today. But I actually ended up canceling my order because I just felt like the bookshelves, oh, they were gonna be, this is why. Because they're ninety-six inches tall and my ceiling's like, it are ninety-five inches. Did you just laugh at me? Or did you just breathe? Oh, you, okay. I thought you were laughing at me because I measured incorrectly.
I can do my work.
Okay. Whatever. Next step in your Aperol Spritz resume. Get back to work. Somebody's gotta pay these bills.
She pays the bills, by the way.
Yeah, I do. All of them. All of them, in fact.
Don't, don't, don't give them any room to do the little ones.
Because they will. They'll take it. Bitch, she doesn't even pay her own rent. Bitch, I pay two rents, anyway. I found this really cute, like champagne, but it's meant for Aperol spritzes at the local liquor store. It's Chandon and it's a garden spritz, so it has sparkling grape wine with orange peel bitters. Which is, orange is the ingredient in Aperol spritzes that I do not have because you can only buy oranges in bulk here. Like everywhere I've gone, they're like, take this huge bag of oranges for two dollars because we have so many. And I'm like, I just need one for an Aperol spritz. Like, I don't need, like, I'm not an orange eating human being, so I'm just, it's like, please. So, you just do one serving of that. And this is usually when I put these little guys into champagne glasses, they're like one full champagne glass. And then I just count to like three with the Aperol. One, two, three. And then I add some kombucha because I just like how it tastes. I just have tried this out before and it works and this is the Pink Lady apple one. And I prefer to do the kombucha instead of, um, tonic water because the tonic water kinda just like waters it down, which is what it's supposed to do, but I don't like that taste. It's my Aperol Spritz recipe. Honestly, babe, we're gonna eat, our pasta's gonna be cold and it's carbonara, so it's hard to reheat. And that's my Aperol Spritz. Um, by the way, it's what, seven fifteen? We have to leave here by like seven thirty in the morning. Have we packed? No. Yeah, have we run any of the errands I said I was gonna run today? Absolutely not. Am I drinking an Aperol Spritz? Yeah, okay. Chat soon.